Day of prayer, next Monday, Sam Frat will be coming. We have Teach Children to Save Week with Vicki Breeders coming. We also have Municipal Clerks Week. Kathleen will be accepting that. We've got two Mayor's Awards, Hillary Beard and Erin Brown. Next, we have a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street and a portion of Alley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and west of South Main Street Burlington, Iowa. This is going to be the first reading on that. Mr. Tissel?
I'm going to show a map on the projector here. So this is just south of, building at 629 South Main Street, which has been a former Domino's pizza place, currently a vacant building. Portion of Spruce Street right-of-way and then a portion of Alley right-of-way located between 223 and 611. This being Campbell's auto body request does come from Campbell's to vacate the right-of-ways, Michael and Sally Campbell. Easement shall be retained over the vacated right-of-way for a private sewer located within the right-of-way and access for any maintenance. Sales price would be $3,000. This currently does not serve any other property. It does not continue up to the street, Third Street to the west. And the property at 611 South Main, this is kind of a retaining wall behind them, so there's no direct access from the alley. This would preserve access for all the existing buildings on South Main. Notice had been sent to all property owners and did not receive any other comments. This did go to the Planning Commission on March 21st and was approved five to zero based on petition of the applicant owning adjacent property and maintenance of utilities with continued access for the property located at 213 Spruce Street. Home up here, just at the south edge of the map, is served by a driveway, which this would not affect, so.
Counsel?
No comment here.
We're good?
Looks good.
Okay. Next is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington, Inc. for encroachment into City right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 301 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tissel?
Art Guild, the art center has been looking to do an art installation for a while now. They had looked at a site up near Snake Alley, just weren't able to work out the details there. But they are looking, adjacent to their building on Jefferson Street, there's some wider right-of-way at the corner of Jefferson and Third Street. Them being at 301 Jefferson, they are looking to place a sculpture within the right-of-way outside of the pedestrian area, approximately four to eight feet just to the west of the existing tree there, maintaining four foot off the curb and three feet off the parking area. Kind of the final location based on any intrusion with the tree. They are looking at a 12-foot-high sculpture. One image, I guess it was, it'd be a bronze sculpture. This is a little more colorful than it would actually look like, but in that general location there where all the pedestrian traffic is between the sculpture and the building, there's no crosswalk or any other access in that area. So this is a 12-foot tall, approximately 12-foot-tall art installation that they are looking to place, celebrating music, art, theater, different themes on each of the four totems there, so.
Counsel?
I like it. Looks good.
You like it, Annie?
I do.
It looks good to you?
Mm-hmm.
They're doing good business up at that art center.
Absolutely.
She's doing a great job.
She really is.
Okay, good deal. All right, number five is a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Seal Code Streets Program. Mr. McGregor?
I can't turn and talk, so. Eric is going to throw up a couple of pictures here. We have the plans and specs for the 2017 Seal Code program. If you could just throw up the 17 first and then throw up the second map after that. The one in your right hand is the 17. Zoom out a little bit, there's some up north. As you can see, the estimated cost is $383,000. The yellow roads are the ones, there's one up further north, too, several of them, I guess. Those are the ones we'll be concentrating on for fiscal year '17. If you throw up the other map. We've talked about this before with the sewer separation and M.A.S.L., there's quite a few sewer or Seal Code roads in that area, so we're going to try and focus on the ones that are outside of that separation basin, so that way we don't fix a road and then have to go in through and tear it back up in the following couple of years. There's a budget number sheet right off to the side there. Here's a sheet showing the estimated costs at $383,000 estimated last year. As it's listed as the alternative is the pea gravel, the crushed pea gravel. We used that on the Seal Code and it seemed to work fairly well. That line item would be in replacement potentially of line item two of $98,000 as an estimate, so a difference of about $6,000. I know, I wasn't here for the previous years, but for last year, there was a lot, there was no complaints virtually on the dust that was created from the limes, the crushed limestone versus the pea gravel. Pea gravel seems to have been working fairly well, so we'll see what the bids come in at. I think last time the bids were very, fairly comparable between the two pieces of product. The budget for fiscal year '17 is $450,000, so there is a $70,000 margin there where we are underneath, but with change orders and everything and not getting too much into M.A.S.L. separation, we feel it's best to just tackle these streets for this year and then the next year tackle a bunch that are up further north, so.
Questions? Good deal.
I wish we could do more.
Can we see the map of the streets again?
We have so many bad streets in this town. I can't tell which is which here.
Arch and Iowa and...
Lincoln on the north side.
Lincoln, okay, Lincoln, all right. Down on the south is...
And we were down on the south side of town mostly for last year. We did a lot of park.
Dunham...
Is that Dunham?
Dunham, 10th, 11th, and then South 14th Street.
Boy, those are, they are in desperate need.
Are we good?
Yep. Okay, thank you, Eric.
Number six, consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Burlington Flat River Trail Phase One South.
Hi, everyone. I'm Steve Pedrick with French Rennecur. We've been working on the design for this project with both Eric and Charlie. I do have a letter here that I don't think got in the pack yet that I'm going to go over here, so. There's a bunch of copies. I guess the mayor gets the fancy one.
Just going to show a quick map, too, while you're getting that, just to show where we're at and location of the rest of the trail. This is Phase One South, the portion between the ramp behind Big Muddy's coming from Riverside Park. And then continuing north to approximately Oak Street with the Phase One North being the future, in red being future trail project, and then the yellow, it's complete up to Cash Street and Highway 99. So this project is Phase One South, the orange section on this map.
Yeah, well, that was perfect. I think you just covered about my whole first page here of this letter. Thought we haven't said anything. We've got some of the numbers listed there for exactly quantities. The trail is about 2,100 linear feet long. There's a bunch of Jersey barrier that gets removed along there that goes along the top of that big retaining wall. And then there'll be chain link fence put up where that Jersey barrier is removed. And then this is the area where there is a concrete barrier wall there that separates the shoulder from the top of that retaining wall. It's also in the plan to put a steel safety rail along the top of that to make that a little bit higher and a little bit safer for trail users. The project also includes some rework at Oak Street, which is at the very north end of the project. If you look, yeah, right there. This closes a portion, closes the intersection of Oak Street with Bluff Road and does a little bit of rework to the driveway that goes into Burlington Junction Railway there. Moving on to contract details, this is all the proposed schedule, and we're all on schedule for this now unless you have some big red flags here. The public hearing would be May 1st, which is next Monday. Bids are due May 11th at 2:00 P.M. here at City Hall, with the intent that you could award the contract on your May 15th council meeting. It's a completion date contract with October 13th as the completion date. There's several details here about liquidated damages. This shows the insurance limits the contractor will be carrying, and the city will be listed as an additional assured there. Budget is a pretty big item here. The estimate is $735,000 for this work. It is some pretty unique work. Right now, we're kind of shoehorned in. We're basically right at the amount of money that is available through the grant funds for this project. There's state rec trail DOT funds, a couple different DNR REAP grants, and then there's your local contribution as well. There is a little bit of flexibility in the scope, so we'll just have to see how the bids come out. If they come out high, there are a couple of things that can be eliminated if we need to. Right-of-way is all in street right-of-way. Do you want to go to sheet 16 or 17, Eric? Up to one lane of Bluff Road may be closed at a time for this work. And the plan is to have timed stoplights. This shows the, I'm going to say the south half closure, and then the north half is just the same. So there's a road work ahead sign, and then you'll have stoplights, and that's all timed We did put a few dates in here for big events that are going on in downtown Burlington, so the contractor should be aware of those. It shouldn't be a big surprise to them. And the intent is for all the work to be taking place from on top, from Bluff Road, basically, from on top of that retaining wall. We already talked about award, May 15th, and final completion. The warranty period, there's a two-year warranty in the contract documents that the contractor could come back and make any corrections. And I've got one more thing, I'll go over here. I'm sure you guys have all done a zillion construction projects, but I always give this spiel before we get into a project, and it's kind of a nasty speech, but I always think of construction projects like if you're doing a home improvement project, right? So if you're replacing a screen door or putting a new sink in or something, right? And the position we're in right now is you're going to do that home improvement project, but you only get one trip to the hardware store, right? So you can't ever go back. And so there's going to be changes during construction at some point in time. We already talked about, there's a little bit of flexibility. We kind of outlined some of the things, common things that go wrong, but we'll just have to work through them with the contractor and with city council and city staff. I'm confident we'll have a good project, but there are risks with construction, so. Any questions?
I guess the biggest comment is the conversation of the Oak Street vacation.
Yep.
That is, that vacation has been requested by the Burlington Short Line Railroad. It is currently at our city attorney's trying to decide whether or not we can vacate it properly because it serves waterworks and whether or not that easement to the north on their private drive would be acceptable. So that vacation, if it does not happen, would change your plans.
Okay.
Back in where it wouldn't be reworking of that intersection.
So we just stop it? The project would stop quite a bit further south, then?
Correct, so it'd be a change order.
Yep.
From your current plans.
Yep, and it is a unit price contract as well, so the change orders should be pretty cut and dry. We'll have all those unit prices established at the beginning, so.
Sounds good. Do you guys have any other questions for Steve?
What is our contribution? How much?
I got this from Charlie here.
Sorry.
This is according to Charlie Nichols. Local match is $126,500.
And that's in the CIP?
Yep, that's in this current year CIP. $30,000 of that is from the trail fundraising efforts and $94,000 approximately is from city sales tax. It was in last year's, or I guess current year budget that we're in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody else is good?
Yep.
All right. Number seven. We have a motion for preliminary adoption of a second reading of an ordinance providing for the divisions of taxes levied on taxable property in the Deer Point Estate urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Mr. Tissel?
No changes from the previous hearing. This is the second reading in this process establishing the use of TIF for development in the urban renewal area that was approved for Deer Point State's urban renewal area. This just establishes the ability to use TIF. This is second reading, would be one more reading, and then there would also be a development agreement for consideration by the council. And a development agreement would set out the parameters of sales price, amount of TIF, different things like that.
I've got a few things I want to point out there.
Mr. Scott?
Just, we received some information from Mike Pearson, who's also a real estate developer. He had had a study done for some commercial property that he had. We asked him to also take a look at the Grun and Grun and Associates report. But I just want to point out that one of the things that was pointed out by Real Estate Counselors International was that the study that Grun and Grun did didn't seem to take into consideration the $25,000 to $4,000, $2,500 to $4,000 construction job loss that occurred with the completion of the Iowa fertilizer plant. That's not saying that we don't need any housing in this pricing. It's just saying that those numbers may be skewed and that...
But a very high percentage of those workers are in rental property. And I've talked to several major rental people in town. That's where they lived. So as far as housing need per se, I don't think it impacted it one way or the other. That's just my interpretation, anyway.
Okay, I appreciate it. The report says...
I did read it.
The report contradicts that, but it's, it doesn't say specifically, but it sure leads you to a question that... There's also a lot of other numbers. They indicated that there would be a 509 job per year increase in Des Moines County when the figures actually show decreases over a certain period of time. The, I mean, I, I, if you, I guess I would have to just say that in making my decision of how I would vote on this action, this plays a pretty big part in it. And I had some concerns from when the study was done by Grun and Grun at the time that it was done and the jobs that it showed, so it just kind of supports that. But I want the council to know that there is that doubt out there. The other thing that I wanted to point out was that we've had several people step forward in support of the project, and I appreciate what they had to say. However, we're being told that no one else is doing development in that price range. And so I went through recent developments, and Scott Peck and Bob Harkenbauer just finished Pawnee. There were eight single-family houses. Five of those fell within the price range that the developers proposing. All of the condos were at or under that price range. Winchester and Cambridge were built out from 2004 to 2007. Every home that I checked, and I checked a dozen of them, fell within that, within that price range. The condos were considerably under, with the exception of a couple, they were within the price range. Jim Myers Development, or Justin Myers Development on Lavender Lane, two of the five that appeared on the GIS are within the, or within the, or target, or Ryan's...
The one that's for sale now is $365,000.
Pardon me?
The unit on Lavender Lane that's now for sale is $365,000.
Yes, two, there are, there are five houses that are on the GIS, and they are from $270,000 to $350,000.
Right, up to $350,000.
There are five, five houses. Two of them fall within the targeted numbers. And all of the condos that Pearson just completed on Deerfield were completed in 2016. They run from 179.5 to 298.6. There was only the one that was over $238,000. The, all those in Sunrise West were considerably under. In West Burlington, the houses that were done in the last four years on Wheeler and Ramsey, Park Place in West Glasgow, they were either right in that price range or slightly under it, so. There are other developers that are developing, that are developing properties in that price range. However, Ryan's project is solely concentrated on that size.
Right.
That price point. There's not a mixture, there's no condo. That price point. There's not a mixture, there's no condos, there's no over three hundred thousand, so I do wanna point that out in all fairness. His project is very specific. And I just wanna read this to reiterate it, that Grun and Grun Associates did not seem to consider the loss of construction jobs once the fertilizer construction was completed. Considerable evidence suggests that the underlying basis for economic change between 2015 and 16 was a sharp reduction in construction jobs in the region in 2016. The recent loss of these jobs between quarter three, 2015, and quarter three, 2016 has taken or will take a toll on economic growth in 2016, 2017. Not only will the regional economy experience the adverse impact of loss of construction jobs, it may also experience a loss of jobs in other sectors associated with past construction sector job expansion as a construction sector winds down. I just think that's food for thought. Fundamentally, in single-family residential construction, I'm just opposed to TIF. If we had a, if we had a TIF policy in place and that the majority of the council supported, like all of our other policies, I would support it, even though I'm opposed to it. I may not support the policy in a vote, but at least there's a policy in place. And I would know then that everybody that come to this podium and ask this council for the same thing would know that they would be entitled to it. My biggest concern is not treating everyone equally.
That's a valid concern.
I think the nature, though, of TIP, of tax and financing is not something you put into a policy of yay, we do it all this way or we do it... It depends on circumstance beyond our control. I mean, if you read the Iowa's code, all it tells us is we're allowed to do this depending on certain economic projections. But to have a policy to say, we're always gonna do it this way, or we're... I can't see that. I don't see how that would work.
For using, for using TIF?
Yeah. When it goes to court, Bob, the judge is going to say, you know, well, you've done it. You've done it for them. You should have done it for them.
We have this discussion coming up later today, so.
Oh, yeah.
We should.
We're gonna address that.
We should put that in. Can we save that discussion cover?
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything to add before we move on? And thank you for that input, Mr. Scott. Number eight, as a resolution approving lease agreement between the city of Burlington and Burlington Community School District for a use of a portion of property at twenty-one thirty-two Madison Avenue for disc golf project.
Had a discussion with the school district on the use of land behind James Madison School. We have very active disc golf groups and enthusiastic individuals that would like to see along with our Parks Department some expanded disc golf options. And one is adding nine holes primarily in the wooded area behind James Madison, maintaining adequate setback from any homes and maintaining the area pretty much in a natural state. But in discussion with the school district, they had no issue with, I guess, preliminarily no major concerns with us doing that. So this is a lease agreement to use that land for no monetary consideration. It would be more primitive, just putting baskets up in this area. Not cutting down a bunch of trees, not putting in a bunch of concrete or anything, but just an expanded option for the disc golf area by adding nine holes in this area.
You guys good with that?
Amazing to see the number of people that are out there.
Oh, yeah. Loving that. All right, let's keep rolling. We're on the consent agenda. First is a resolution approving demolition nuisance abatements of our various properties. You guys good? Next is a resolution accepting legacy drive right of way. Mr. Tisner?
This was just a catch through the developer and then talking to the county. We did accept the operation of the streets and sewers, but they wanted additional language in making sure that our resolutions are recorded as well, which had been past practice. But this is kind of a cleanup, just to accept the right of way in addition to the streets and sewers and then make sure we record this document as well. So the intent with all our acceptance in the past has been to take over the right of way. This, again, is Legacy Drive located in the former manor site Burlington, crossing subdivision between agency and Market Street, so this resolution just accepts the right of way and we'll get that recorded to come up. It already is being maintained by the city.
We made it all winter long. It's just the wording of which was not the direct appropriate way that the county wanted to see it be said.
Yeah.
It's a correction of that, so.
Any problems, guys?
Nope.
All right, we have some public hearings set for May fifteenth. Person's consideration of an amendment to ordinance number three four zero three, an ordinance creating the Arbor View Estates PUD. B is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property locally known as eight sixteen Valley Street from M one light industrial to C three Central Business District downtown mixed-use zoning district. B, or, I'm sorry. C is consideration of plans and specifications for the demolition of the property located seven fifteen Chakacon Drive, Burlington, Iowa. D is consideration of plans and specifications for two thousand seventeen agency street widening project west end. E is consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand seventeen retaining wall.
I have a comment on that if you'd like it.
Yes, sir.
I met with Brian Bros at Thirty Percent Conceptual Design. We look like we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be doing a retaining wall anymore. It'll, the process that will be done is soil nails is what they're called. Essentially, they're rods that are stuck into the ground or drilled into the ground, rather. They think that they're gonna be able to hit rock in a fairly early stage. They're gonna be able to cap them in there. It is estimated at the max budget, and I shouldn't say max budget, estimated around three hundred and fifty thousand, which is a lot less than the initial retaining wall at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. So this is definitely something that I thought we should look at doing, saving a significant amount of money and going for this option. So you'll see the plans being talked about on that date, so.
Have I told you lately that I like you? All right. Anything to say, anybody?
A little bit. Before, I believe there was a lot of probably trees and things like that on that area, and then the homeowner, I believe, got rid of it all. I don't know if that...
This is a little different area?
Is it not?
One of the areas, there was several areas of concern. Oh, shoot, what is it? Is it Seventh and Oak or Sixth and Oak? There is a property owner that did, it was on city property or on private property where the city had a storm line that had came loose. There was a lot of trees removed in that area, however, that is the property owners'. We did go in and correct the storm sewer line and fill back in dirt that was eroded from the storm sewer being out. We did not fill in any of the other erosion, though. I do think that clearing a lot of that vegetation could lead to further erosion in the future.
I just think it's important for those homeowners all along there to realize that vegetation, those trees are there for a reason, to keep your house from falling off the block.
Good point.
That was good wisdom, my friend. Anything else? Okay, F is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one thirty-seven sidewalk regulations of the Burlington Municipal Code. G is consideration of budget amendment number one for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget. H is consideration on a proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement in a principal not, a principal amount not to exceed three hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. We have, we have a consideration of two thousand seventeen amendment to urban renewal plan for Burlington consolidated urban renewal area related to Apollo's High School property disposition for May fifteenth. It was previously scheduled. And then a consideration of acquisition and development agreement related to urban renewal project in connection with Apollo High School property disposition to be June fifth. Okay, for discussion tonight, first, we have the treasurer's report.
March's treasurer's report is in the packet. Just can talk about a couple of things, I guess. So April, we'll get our big tax payments, so like the general fund will look better. Golf course and those, those are just timing of the season, rec pucks and transfers that we do at the end of the year to cover different equipment items and things. Property maintenance, again, that's timing because we're always one month behind when we bill. Vehicle maintenance is timing and then we bought some fuel, we did a fuel pump upgrade.
We did a fuel improvement where we took out the existing, I guess, what would you call it, the little hub, and then redid wiring and did new programming. We were on DOS before, so that was the change that we had approved back in November through Seneca, so that's what you see there.
So that's the big, that's what increased our deficit there, so. Then on capital projects, I mean, things pretty much stayed the same. The one maybe that you guys stick out is the Depot renovations, and that's the money that we're waiting from friends for, and we've been in contact with them, so that's just a timing thing of when we'll start getting payments from them to help cover that. The Dresser Rand site will be TIF when it's completed. And then as far as the revenue, the only thing that stuck out to me was like debt service has a lot of revenue and that's because we got our bond proceeds. That's the big number on there. And then, I don't know if anything on the expenditures, if you guys, I guess my big one that's just a couple percentage over would be the parking fund, and that's just property maintenance charges for the upkeep of the parking lots and whatnot, so. If you guys had any other questions?
Good job, Nan.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nan.
Okay, next we have a presentation, property maintenance.
Yep, you got the word. I'm gonna switch seats. I'm all over. I'm not normally like...
You're all over the...
Jim isn't like this.
You're all over the place, man. You're hard to handle, McGregor.
He's just more subtle. He does the same thing.
I'm a little, I'm a little more animated than him.
Man, it's hard to believe we found such a talented guy in Alaska. Welcome to America, my friend.
All right, tonight we're gonna talk about property maintenance. We're gonna talk about the staff, the budget, the structures they take care of, take care of, the work that they do, and then some private comparisons. There we go. I guess it's a little smaller here, but as you can see here, I've taken the organizational chart, which is not updated. There's some people that don't work there anymore. But the people in property maintenance that are highlighted in the red circle are all there. The one difference that you'll notice is Mr. Eddie Marsh is not necessarily housed underneath property maintenance. He's paid through the sewer fund. He locates for us, but he is supervised by property maintenance. We have five full-time employees, three part-time. As you can see, the three part-time have various different tasks. And we have ninety-two collective years of service between the employees. This is a item I borrowed from my own PowerPoint presentation for the budget, where I highlighted that we're gonna talk about the property maintenance budget and then all, where I don't have these on the slideshow, but property maintenance oversees all of the maintenance budgets for the buildings which reside in the general fund. The property maintenance fund is an internal service fund. And it's really small, isn't it? As you, as you might be able to make out at the bottom, the total obligation for property maintenance in its own fund is five hundred and thirty-one thousand seventy-three for this upcoming fiscal year in eighteen, which is about an eighteen thousand dollar increase from the previous fiscal year. I guess less than that. I'm off. It's less than that. These are all the city-owned, well, I shouldn't say all the city-owned. These are all the structures I felt that I could get on a map that would best explain the number of structures that property maintenance takes care of. Here are all the park structures that we assist Parks Department with in the maintenance of electricity, water, HVAC systems, windows, doors, any sort of carpentry. When we bill out, when property maintenance bills out its work as an internal fund, it bills out to a numerous bunch of coding. And I have three fiscal years. I have fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen in front of you. And so as we go through them, you will see the various areas where it expands one year and moves to another. A little explanation, the property maintenance shop, which makes for the largest portion of each of the following three years, is where vacation, sick time, and some just general time when they're in the shop doing certain types of work. But you can see here, the flood took up a decent portion of time, locates took up a decent portion of time, and traffic signals took up a decent portion of time. The next year, you saw the flood numbers bump up, the depot numbers bump up. And then this was this last fiscal year. Public lighting took a bump up. We did a big LED conversion on Roosevelt. And I'll let Braden talk a little bit about the work. I'll bring him up here to talk about the work. I don't, I don't even know the number of years you've been the property maintenance manager, but he's got more years of experience than I am.
Braden Hill, property maintenance. I just kinda wanted to, I think there's a misconception of some of the things we do that aren't seen by the public. There's incredibly, as you can see, and I narrowed down a bunch.
There's a misconception from the public?
Well, no, not necessarily the public, just for everybody, actually. We do tend to be in places that...
Traffic lights was my biggest. I didn't know that property maintenance took care of traffic lights when I got here.
Take care of a lot of it.
I assumed that that was a function of streets, but that's a big, that's a big task underneath property maintenance is traffic.
For five full-time people, and that's including myself, we do do a lot of things. I don't think people realize that every year we remove benches from the CBD and have, while they're being repainted, then we re-anchor them around the area of downtown when that's decided where they need to be. And we do have all the parking lots downtown. And once again, those are pretty well taken care of by one of our part-time people, so we don't put the full-time people so much into that unless it's handrails that are broken, lighting. There just, there tends to be things like the curbing, sidewalk repairs. We do tend to take care, try to take care of everything on the riverfront. The exposed ag seems to be kind of a problem because it's hard to get anymore, so we do do a lot of that by hand where we do the concrete and then sprinkle in the ag rock instead of getting it with it in it and then brush it out, which has worked pretty well. We've had a lot of assistance from the street shop in that area, too. But there's, you know, and I know everybody knows that we're involved heavily with steamboat days on setup, tear down, and then just a general maintenance. And even though that's just a small portion of a twelve-month period, it does require a fair amount of time. And then we have, we do the maintenance for the radio towers at Dane Street. We don't service the radios, but we do service and keep the generator shack, the radio tower building, and then heating, air conditioning, and lighting for that, that building in particular. We have, we're the ones that hang the banners over the freeway and then take them down. These are the things like the handrails that get vandalized or hit by a car. We tend to be the ones that refab. be the ones that refab or replace when necessary. And as everybody sees, there's seems to be an uptick for graffiti and we take care of most of all of that out of our department, which is, can be time-consuming and tends to be a little expensive when it seems to be on railroad property, but I just, the things like the storm warning sirens, these are all things that admittedly don't take large amounts of time, but when they don't work, we have to respond to them pretty quickly. And I just want to throw in there that there are a lot of things that aren't seen by anybody that we do. If there was anything, well, actually, we move offices, filing cabinets.
It's funny that you're even bringing this up right now, you know, I just saw this video that my daughter showed me, which I thought was hilarious. It's this guy and he got married, he's been married for like a year or something like that and his wife comes home and he's talking to her and she's like, hey, what did you, you know, didn't you get anything done today, you do anything? He's like, I gotta tell you a secret, so I gotta fill you in on this. He goes, this house is magic. And she's like, oh my gosh, what? He goes, no, I'm totally serious, something to that effect, he's like, you see this basket? He said, you just put clothes in there? He said, the next morning, they're all clean and folded up. He says, it just happens. He says, you see this table? He says, you just set anything down at this table and then he says, come morning time, it's just gone, it just vanishes, it just goes right back, you know? People, you know, and things don't stay clean, things don't stay picked up, you know, and it's good to have that reminder that you guys are hustlers and trying to get her done and I just wanna say that I personally, I see your guys all over the place, done a little bit of everything, so. It's not coming from me, just for the record.
No, no.
I appreciate, we appreciate you guys.
I am lucky to have the guys in the shop that I do because they all take pride in their work. They don't require a lot of prodding to do certain jobs, obviously there's jobs that some people don't wanna do.
Right on.
A whole bunch.
I would say the most interesting job that I've seen happen in the last, well, month and a half was the big geode that's in the welcome center at the port.
Oh, right.
Property maintenance was the crew that had to help figure out how to move that puppy. It weighs eight hundred pounds?
Eight hundred pounds.
And it's not easy to lift?
Yeah, not easy to lift and nobody wanted it dropped. Everybody had a close eye on it.
Right on, right on.
I classify these guys as kind of the jack-of-all-trades crew because they do everything from electrical plumbing to fabbing to, you know, you name it. This is the crew that takes care of most of that.
Right on.
Brayden, what is the building across the street from the fifth hole at Flint Hills? It's a white building and by the North Gorge Trail headquarters, starting point?
It's some sort of well pump, I believe.
Did we have a truck out there working on it today, I thought?
It probably would have been one of the water company trucks that would have been...
Oh, that's what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's not in our group, our system?
No. So, and I kinda wanted to run a comparison, these are current numbers as of right now for what the contractors are charging. I chose two and got the information from here locally, trying to keep everything local. The electrical is, they're pretty close to each other on everything that they charge. They, one company charged more if they were there less time than an hour. So, it kinda gives you an idea, both companies I chose had a bucket truck, so I could throw that into the mix because we do have a bucket truck also. And the plumbing was kinda out there. These were both local and their charges for holidays and Sundays were pretty high. And our average rates, which we got them in net for seventeen, sixteen, fifteen and fourteen, those are our average for those calendar years for what our department charges against other departments. And I did throw in, there's one company in town that has a lift truck that's capable of going as high as our new one and that's what their hourly rate for an operator and the truck is. So, it kinda gives you a fair idea at the very least as to where we're at.
If we were to hire, could you go back to that, please? If we were to hire out private, the ways that property maintenance definitely gains an advantage is if we were to respond on a holiday or overtime hours or on the weekend, we definitely have a lower overtime rate than the private contractors do. Because our percentage doesn't go up as, I don't know those figures without having talked to a Nan, but they are significantly less than the overtime rates presented, but I just wanna keep that in consideration. You know, in asking Brayden to throw some of this up there, because they do all this different variety of stuff, I thought electrical and plumbing were the things that should have the easiest comparison to the private sector. I don't know how you have someone, you know, on call to fab something, you know? Sure you could take it to someone, but to have a generalized dollarly rate to compare is really hard to do.
There are contractors that we use, there are certain things we can't do. At one point in time, our shop did try to do all the drain opening and snaking of city buildings and it became so expensive that, and then finding, training everybody in the shop to be able to do it when a lot of times, as Tim can attest, it's a two-man job at the very least. And there are some electrical issues that we definitely have to go to a contractor for.
On that list of jobs, is it your department that makes the speed limit signs, all the other signs that go around the city?
No, the streets department takes care of that.
Yes.
Mr. Cameron takes care of that for us.
He does a fantastic job, too.
So, is there anything that I can answer or...
Counsel, any questions for Mountain?
No, thank you very much, Brayden.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate all the hard work you do and the crew. Thank you, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, number four.
Thank you for scheduling that.
Tip policy.
What was in your packet was just a memo with an overview of just looking at various policies we're able to find online. Fairfield had, I guess, the most detailed policy related directly to housing, so this memo just gives a summary of their strategies, goals and objectives within their housing policy. It seems less of a rigid policy and more to be a framework for consideration for Fairfield when they consider the use of TIF. And then some additional items that are contained within the Fairfield policy and some other cities as well, such as application forms, consideration of walkability, infill, blight, brownfield, growth areas, housing needs, infrastructure expansion, minimum investment or improvement amounts, rebate terms. Some have a review of a TIF policy, Fairfield, for example, has an annual review by staff and some of their other groups there that's brought back to council on an annual basis. And then most of them have statements that state, even though there's a policy, it doesn't obligate the city to use TIF funds for any or all projects that meet the criteria of the policy, it's still ultimately up to council what they wanna approve, so. It seems, looking at Fairfield, it sets up a good framework, but we just wanted to put this in front of you to be able to have the discussion and direct staff, if you want us to bring something similar to this or something different or any criteria forward for further discussion or if you just wanna kinda consider this and see what direction you want, but if you have anything to add, Nick, but it's really just to give something in front of you to consider and let us know if you want us to prepare anything differently.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was the thing I noticed reading through there was the statement that this is a policy that doesn't obligate, that just anybody that comes up and makes requests, it doesn't mean that you're going to get approval for it. Looking through their policy, it seems like pretty much what we're doing informally, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Without a policy.
I was more looking in a different direction, I was looking for, well, I guess a little policy, too, but I was hoping we could come with the consensus on the number, if we're going to address this problem using the TIF and just go ahead and be rid ourselves of it, you know? Or what, you know, if this is an issue, let's not let it continue on and whoever wants a piece of the action, let's let them jump in feet-first and get it done so we can walk away, that's what I was hoping to establish some policy on to get it.
And number, meaning what?
On, we've got, what was it? I'll just say approximately eighty-some units that the study said that we needed of these specific houses in this area. I was hoping for a policy that we could say, alright, if we're gonna run this, if we're gonna do this TIF, we're gonna do it to meet this need and whoever the developers that come forward, so that way they can't say, well, you know, you're giving favoritism, we're giving favoritism to whoever builds these houses and whoever comes and builds these houses and meets this number, get aggressive, you know, do your thing, but, and then the TIF is over with. We did what we needed to do, we did it in bulk, we got it done and it's done. And that's kind of the direction that I was hoping to go with this deal. Let's squash the problem, if it is a problem that everybody says that it is, let's just be done with it.
I'd have to do some consideration on that, I don't know if I could go for that.
Kick it around, it's a work session, but I wanted to throw that out there and I think, I think it has merit, I definitely think it needs, it deserves a little consideration at least to kick it around, so.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting way to look at it, too, I hadn't really thought about it that way, as a way for it to be something that wouldn't be a long-term thing, something that we and other future councils aren't gonna have to come back and say yes or no to whoever, because as it says in, say, this one, it's still up to the city council whether... So, that's really, that even still, that kinda sounds like favoritism if we're gonna put that in there.
Well...
I mean, how do you get around that?
To me, it makes more sense to have a policy that says if you're opening up new area,
Well, that's what, yeah.
Like what this Deer Point is doing, but then there's also infill type things you gotta consider, too.
I think that's a completely separate deal, I think we look at that completely different than we do on this deal.
Could we combine it?
I don't think...
I mean, wouldn't, like, have all of these, just have this policy and then, like, up until these certain needs are met? Kind of like a best of both worlds?
I think it's something that needs to be looked at, I just, to me, I felt like it was completely different deals that...
At first glance, I thought that was pretty inclusive, but I think it obviously needs more study, we aren't gonna say tonight that we're gonna do this, I hope. You have something, Mr. Scott?
Well, just with Shane's approach, I'm a little concerned because the housing assessment was a ten-year plan and it called for, in this particular price range, it was sixteen homes on an annual basis. And if you look at how the other developments have progressed, that's kind of a realistic number for Burlington. What my concern is, is that we get the thirty-four units in and then we don't have any more development, but we have a demand for it.
Yeah.
That's when you create the incentive or the TIF. You don't, you don't go into it with a TIF. If there's a, if there's a need or a demand and that demand is being met under current incentive conditions, then why add another step until it's needed? And that's why I'm interested in a policy that says, we've got this out here, it's a tool that we can use if we need to. If we never need to use it, great, we've got a heck of an economy rolling along. Now, I mean, I don't know if Ryan's been able to demonstrate for all of you that that need is rolling, that he can't do this development without the TIF. I mean, the housing assessment says we need this many houses over this length of time. He's targeted to get that done, the first portion of, thirty-four houses, and it's gonna take him three years at least to get that done, based on what everybody else has done in their developments. It's been three to five years to get that quantity of houses done, so. And that's after the infrastructure's been put in.
Right. To me, that's different if you're opening up a new territory and having to put in the infrastructure rather than infill where the infrastructure's already there.
Yeah, this is definitely unique and I just wanna say for the record, I hear what you're saying and you're making sense to me, but I just wanna be honest with everybody, I've already, I've already gone past the point of no return on this, on this development. I feel like in my mind that we need it, we've gone through this process and it is unique, it's, he's putting in the streets. He's given money back to the, not just given money back, but he's got a plan, I like the development, I'll leave it at that.
So, now we're, we're moving back into talking about that development instead of the policy?
Well, we're working it out, man, we're working it out, but back to the policy, we're not gonna be able to decide anything tonight anyways, I think we all need time to, I guess, go through it, but...
And I'd like to hear what Jim has to say, too.
Would you like to see another sample of a policy if we can find it?
I think this, I'm satisfied with this right here, I just want some time to stick my, sink my teeth into it and...
Do you have any comments?
This is, I think this is, the direction that I'm after, it's just, needs to be put together a little differently to satisfy me.
Would you like it on a following...
Sorry? I can't tell you yet, I haven't had a lot of time to look at this.
Would you like it on a following work session to discuss this again?
Yes.
Next one?
It'll be May first.
May, okay.
Okay.
Have anything?
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with the appointments? Okay? Mr. Teslin?
Nothing.
Antoinette?
Um, well, there's all kinds of fun things happening downtown.
Lay it on 'em.
My favorite event, it's the Spring Sip Taste and Stroll. This weekend.
Look at her face.
I wanna see so many people out there that it takes me forever to get to the next place. And also, Young House Family Services is having their fundraiser dinner, which I went to last year. This year, it looks like they both, both the sip and stroll and that dinner fall during the same time, so. But, yeah, there's all kinds of fun stuff happening downtown, so get out there.
All kinds of fun stuff. Tim Scott?
While we're downtown, there was a commercial properties open house this weekend, available commercial properties. That was my first one, I thought it was, we had a pretty good turnout. There's a, there's a lot of development going on downtown and a lot that the average person doesn't know about right now, so. We're gonna see a thriving downtown of the fifties that I don't believe, I mean, the way it's, the way it's going and parking's only just begun to be a problem. It's gonna be huge.
That's true, that's true. The only thing I've got is the downtown, I received an email over the weekend of somebody that came and visited our downtown and they came from a different city to get some ideas on what we're doing. and they came from a different city to get some ideas on what we're doing that's so special, because their downtown is struggling and they've spent a lot of money there. So, I was encouraged by that, that somebody from another community was coming to Burlington to look at our downtown. I think, I just wanna say to everybody that has anything to do with revitalizing the downtown, that hand clap was for you. I think that's all I've got. Mayor Proton?
Tomorrow starts the Tuesday route on the City White Cleanup.
There you go.
I've noticed that their, the collectors have been out, saving you guys a lot of work, so...
The collectors, we'll be giving them a nuisance abatement tomorrow. The collectors.
To me, that's a good thing.
Thank God, bless 'em, man.
Recycle all that stuff, anyway. So it's Tuesday garbage route starting tomorrow for the next week, right?
That's right. My pleasure.
I think at this time, thank you.
Nick?
We have pre-construction tomorrow with the roundabout, and then af, following that, the signage will be going in place for the detour using Division Street, so I don't know the timings on that, but as of for sure Wednesday morning, the detour will be in place, so.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, I think that's it. Rob Sussman got married here in Burlington, anything's possible. Good night.